And will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
I, Mike Bogaszewski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you.
I, your name, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
I, Rose Chu, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota and will discharge faithfully the duties of my office to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Welcome to our new board member, Director Chu, and our returning members of Director Bogaszewski and Dr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we need an official roll call.
Certainly. Director Chu.
Here.
Director Shaw. Here. Director Jackson.
Here.
Treasurer Anderson.
Here.
Chair Goggins.
Here.
And Clerk Bogaszewski is here as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any agenda adjustments this evening?
There aren't any agenda adjustments, Chair Goggins.
Okay. Any announcements or comments?
Nope.
I do have one announcement for the community, and this is being put on or hosted by our leadership and training group, who have done an excellent job of hosting community conversations before. This is called the Vibe, and it's an environment for you not just as a parent but also as an adult. It's unstuck series, moving from the mundane to the meaningful. Feeling stuck, overwhelmed, out of balance? For many of us, our life is filled with busyness, distractions, and breaking points that can drive us to feel stuck. During the unstuck discussion series, the Vibe will explore principles to help us and find meaning again. And they have one on January 30th for unstuck in my vision, dreams, and future; February 27th, unstuck in my family; March 26th, unstuck in my inner circle; April 30th, unstuck in my finances; and May 21st, unstuck in my growth plan. And these will be at the Fairview Community Center from 6:00 to 7:30. And there's a free dinner and childcare activities provided, and the community is welcome. So anybody pass that on if you know of anybody who might be of interest. This will be a great opportunity. They're a really talented group of students in hosting these kinds of conversations.
Any chance that those could be, the dates could be heard on the website?
Can we put this on the website?
Sure.
Wonderful. Good suggestion. Thank you. Next business we have is the organization of the school board. This is by law, needs to occur in the first meeting of January. And we will begin with the, let's see here, the affirmation of school board policies. We have a number of policies in the 200 series that we annually look at and affirm our commitment to. Is there anything you'd like to say, Dr. Secord?
Uh, no.
Okay. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to reaffirm the school board governance policies?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. That moves us to our next item under organization of the school board, and that is the election of chair. Statute 123B .17 states that on the first Monday of January of each year, or as soon thereafter as practical, the board must meet and organize by selecting a chair clerk and treasurer who shall hold offices for one year and until their successors are selected and qualified. So we'll begin with the office of chair. Are there any nominations for a chair?
I would like to put in a nomination, the name of Mike Bogaszewski as chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for a chair? Any other nominations for chair?
May I ask for clarification?
Certainly.
Could, could the current chair be nominated too?
Yes, that is a possibility.
Okay. This is a one-year term, right?
It's a one-year term, and our norm has been to serve two years, and I'm just completing my second year.
Ah, got it.
So I wasn't putting my name in. Anybody can nominate themselves, they can nominate anyone else, so I should make that clear for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So let's.
You did it twice. You should ask one more time.
Any other nominations for a chair? Okay. So we have a, we have one candidate, we wouldn't necessarily need to approve it, but I think following the standard procedure is always a good thing. So all in favor of Director Bogaszewski serving as chair for 2020, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, name? Okay. Then at this point, I turn the chair position over to my, Dr. Director Bogaszewski.
I'd like to cue Director Goggins. Thank you, fellow board members. I only say that I'll hope to do this as ably as my predecessors, who were just wonderful at it, so. With that, we will move on to the, thank you, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the election of clerk. And as with the chair, this is driven by Minnesota Statute 123B .14, and is again an office that's elected annually. So with that, I would open the meeting for nominations for clerk.
I'd like to nominate Todd Anderson for clerk.
Todd Anderson has been nominated. Any other nominations for clerk? Any further nominations for clerk? Any further nominations for clerk? Hearing none, then we will take the vote as a new chair. All in favor of electing Todd Anderson as clerk for the coming term, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Clerk Anderson. We'll now move on to election of the treasurer. Open the floor for nominations for treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Kitty Goggins for treasurer.
Thank you. Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Any other nominations for treasurer? Thank you, Director Johnson. With that, we'll close nominations, and similarly, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Kitty Goggins for as treasurer for the board for the coming term, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you. Welcome Treasurer Goggins. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda, accepting the gifts. Is this our common practice?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda has passed. I believe Director Shaw, you're reading gifts this evening?
I'm reading the beginning of the gifts.
The beginning of the gifts.
There are a lot of gifts, and I'm reading through the end of the gifts to Edgerton Elementary School. So I'd like to acknowledge a gift from Robert and Deborah Benzick of Financial Resources to support a field trip at Rim Hall Elementary School. A gift to Financial Resources from Mighty Cause Charitable Foundation, from Wells Fargo Your Cause for Students in Need to Central Park Elementary School. A gift of financial resources by John and Peggy Traver for the Media Center at Central Park Elementary School. And a gift from donorschoose.org of books and literacy resources for classroom use at Central Park Elementary School. A gift of financial resources from the E.D. Williams PTA to the E.D. Williams Elementary School for field trip, art supplies, playground equipment, and school store items. A gift from Joan Phillips, and another from Tom White for Students in Need at Edgerton Elementary School. A gift from Salesforce.org, and Salesforce.org to Edgerton Elementary School for Student Enrichment. And finally, a gift to Edgerton Elementary School for Mighty Cause Charitable of Financial Resources for Student Enrichment.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
He's going to pick up the, okay?
We'd like to thank Mighty Cause Charitable Foundation for a financial gift for school activities at Fairview Alternative High School. We'd like to thank Roseville Lutheran Church for a financial gift for the Meals and Wheels Program at Fairview Community Center. We'd like to thank Art Lingo, St. Anthony Park Chapter for winter clothing items for students in need at Fairview Community Center. We'd like to thank St. Odilia Catholic Church for winter clothing items for students in need at Fairview Community Center. The MPX Group for envelopes for office use to be used at Fairview Community Center. We'd like to thank Diana Secon for a financial gift for a field trip at Falcon Heights Elementary School. Mary Mann's, a financial gift for the Classroom Project at Parkview Center School. The Rose Town Auxiliary, a financial gift for flexible seating at Parkview Center School. We'd like to thank the Parkview Center PTSA, a financial gift for classroom grants at Parkview Center School. The Minnesota Weapons Collectors, a financial gift for the Ra's Trap Team at the Roseville Area High School. We want to thank the Roseville Area High School Girls Hockey Booster Club, a financial gift for additional coaches at Roseville Area High School. The Roseville High School Girls and Boys Soccer Booster Club, a financial gift for an additional coach at the Roseville Area High School. And we'd like to thank Premier Bank, a financial gift for helping out some unpaid meal charges for Roseville Area Schools. We definitely want to thank the generosity and the contributions of our wonderful community. Definitely, yes. Every meeting, we're impressed and humbled a bit by what our community gives us. Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Frank. With that, we'll move ahead. It looks like we have no reports or non-action items tonight, so we'll move into action items. And the first one is a discussion about flexible learning year application for Harambe Elementary School, and I believe Dr. Jennifer Luck is going to be leading us through this discussion. Dr. Lake, how are you tonight?
Good evening, board. As you can see, I'm bringing forward the flexible learning application for Harambe Elementary School that's required by MDE. We last applied in the 2016-17 school year, and we're required to submit our application by March 1st, March 3rd, and March 6th of this school year. So we're bringing it to you at this time for your approval. As you know, Harambe Elementary School is a year-round, community-focused school.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Lake from the board?
Is there anything different this year than our application in the past?
The application is very, very similar. I would add that Harambe has been awarded a turnaround arts grant from the Kennedy Center just to amplify the richness of their offerings.
I would like to move that we approve the flexible learning year application, as it has been approved and presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Lake. With that, we'll move into a couple of policy discussions that need action tonight. The first is Policy 604, Curriculum Development, a second reading, being provided to us by Jake Von De Fenta. Mr. Von De Fenta, how are you tonight?
Thank you for having me. I did present this at the December board meeting. We didn't identify any further changes at that time, so I'd like to present this as the final Policy 604. There's just a few changes within that that we made to some of the language.
Great. Any questions or comments for Jake?
I was just going to move adoption of the policy as presented.
Great. Second. Second, thank you. Any further discussion? Moved in seconded. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Jake. The next action item is Policy 612, second reading of the homeschooling policy, and our business director, Sherry Thompson, bringing this. Ms. Thompson, how are you tonight?
Good evening. So yes, this is part of our, the annual or the administrative policy review. We did bring this back at the December board meeting. We have reviewed the policy, we don't have any changes from the previous version, so we're bringing it back this evening for approval.
Great. Any initial questions or entertain a motion?
I make a motion to accept it.
Thank you, Director Johnson.
I second.
Seconded. Any, moved in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of approving Policy 612 as read in its second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Director Thompson. With that, I think we're moving into board reports, so. I don't, anyone want to start? Anything you want to share with us tonight, Todd?
Real quickly, yes, just a quick AMSD reminder of the AMSD session preview coming up. I think I did mention at the last meeting, but it's just worth putting out there again, Friday, February 7th, at the Cora Education Center, usually one of our longer sessions because we have a, there will usually be a legislative panel. Senator Chuck Uyghur is going to be one of the panelists, but from 7:30 until 10:00. And we usually do invite all of our area legislators, so that's.
So is this coming Friday morning?
Friday, February 7th.
For February 7th?
Yep. Yep, at the Cora Education Center. And then I did want to mention as well, too, last night, I had an opportunity to attend the District Curriculum Advisory Committee, a really great program. We had some presenters from the English Language Program there to tell the DCAC a little bit more about the program, had a lot of good discussion and questions. We had a wonderful report on college and career readiness reports and Raider Career Pathways. Principal Hester came on over and a lot of good questions and discussion. You could just really see that, I don't know if a lot of the DCAC members knew about the Raider Career Pathways and what we were doing in college and career readiness, but just really opened up some minds that everything we're doing at the high school to prepare folks, so that was a wonderful discussion, and that's all I have. Okay. Piggybacking off AMSD Association of Metropolitan School Districts, had a board meeting, and a lot of really good things that was discussed, but the thing I will pay particular attention to was a discussion on vaping. And, you know, in addition to the, all of the, all the science and all of the things that make vaping not a good thing, and what was discussed was, you know, avenues to combat that, you know, from a school level, it's like, what can we do here? So it's one thing to go into a health class and say, shouldn't do vaping because it's bad, but the, one of the suggestions was to incorporate that message into multiple classes, so just have this not just in health class, but in science class, and in your marketing class, you know, show how people are marketing this ticket so that they hear it from different venues. So I found that particularly interesting. And of course, it's a new year, so that means I have to give a report on the Roseville Area High School competitive cheer team. So they won second place at their last competition, which is the Sweetheart Classic at Edana High School Go Raiders.
Frank, anything?
Yeah. I did a PTA crawl last night, I was just to say, I started out at Edgerton at the PTA meeting, and then I moved over to the PTA meeting at Central Park. And I might look, as we do, as we do our committees' assignments or assignments of liaisons tonight, I might come off of not trying to do both of those at the same time since their PTA meetings do conflict with each other. But I was able, I was able to make at least the second half of the Edgerton one, of the Central Park one, having done the first half of the Edgerton one. So at Edgerton, both were very interesting meetings. We saw their makerspace, they have, they've got a makerspace that has been worked out as part of the Media Center, and it's not like the Spark Lab, they're not getting, the students aren't getting stuff every week as they do at the Spark Lab at Central Park, but they are getting it once a month or so through the Media Center. And it's full of very interesting things, but in particular, one of the sort of, I don't want to call it a toy, one of the, one of the activities that they have there in the makerspace is a, is a board where marbles drop down the board, and you can, you can make the marbles go in particular directions to make patterns of it, and there's a lot of ingenuity involved in this, and it's basically circuit design, except it's done with, with ball bearings under the force of gravity instead of electrons under the force of, you know, differential magnetism. So you can actually see the current happening, and I thought it was fascinating, I thought it was wonderful how we can pull back a little bit from technology and, and accomplish the same, the same things. And I'm seeing this throughout the elementary curriculum, that there's a little bit less technology, a little bit more mindfulness and use of pencils and papers, and it's a trend that I'm quite excited about. But, on the other hand, there was a group at the, at Edgerton, this is announced last night, who were, they were in their win time, their what I need time, were doing special projects with, at the Media Center. Coding was the, was the principal project, but one of the things they did is they applied for a, to send a challenge or send a project in, and these are sixth graders, mine, for the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow program. And they have done a project involving invasive species and boat washes, and they won! And mostly, these are middle schools and high schools that do this, very few elementary schools are in it, but they have won for the state. And they are now, and there's a substantial financial payoff for this, and, and it's really extremely exciting, and this will be, we'll be hearing more from it, we probably should have them in to. So they're going to be developing a three-minute video to then send out to, to the more internationals, so they're, I'm not sure how many are at their level, but there are a few, and they will then compete at that level for the national. If they win the national, they go off to New York. These are Edgerton sixth graders, and it sounds like a fabulous project that they worked on, so that's good. We'll be hearing more from them. Also, Jen Peterson was there to tell, talk about the Roseville Area Schools Foundation, and the discussion item came up, it's really a very interesting one, this also came up at the Central Park Elementary PTA meeting, at the differential budgets of the different PTAs. And the question then was whether there was some attempt to compensate for that through, because this is another sort of funding source, through the Schools, Rosevalley Schools Foundation. She said she'd take that back, and we had really quite a frank discussion about it. It's interesting to talk about, and this, the same thing came up at the Central Park PTA later. Otherwise, both meetings full of interesting and interested people, and a lot of enthusiasm from the parents as well as enthusiasm from the staff. So it was a good, a good, a good set of, a good evening of PTA.
Thank you.
Great.
Kitty, anything?
Yes, please. I had an opportunity, I got invited by the Painters and Glazers Union, who has been working in our buildings across the district to come visit their facility, because that's within our district, it's over just kind of east of Bryce, and they have an amazing facility with a huge warehouse-sized pilot plant. And they represent glazers, tapers, painters, sign creation, and trade shows employees, and they also expressed some interest in potentially seeing if there were some ways to partner more with Rosevalley Schools, and I passed on the contact about that possibility. I had an opportunity to attend last week the Emmett Williams PTA. We also got to hear about the foundation. But of course, it's a school that has more means, so that conversation wasn't quite the same. I got to also give an update, and what I shared was the role of the board, because I've been finding a PTA that's something they don't understand and have a desire to understand. And then I also started talking about the financial situation of the district. We've been talking about wanting to do some financial education, and that's actually part of the reason why I wanted to be treasurer, is because I'd like to be actively involved in helping in the financial education of our community about the situation in our district. And that went well, lots of good questions, lots of engagement. Then, yesterday, I guess it was, I had an opportunity to go to the Emmett Williams All-Schoolwide Assembly, and this was very interesting because they have a monthly assembly where every, all the students come, and they kind of have an introduction to a book or a topic that they'll then read a book on, and everybody in the school reads the book. And so far this year, they've done a Latino one and Indigenous people, and yesterday's was around autism. And they had a video that kind of, and that introduced, and also they talked about how we each have a unique experience in the world based on how our senses perceive the world, and, and it was just really well done, and then they had a kind of an experiential learning for the students, they each got a bag, and they had to, with only the sense of touch, describe what was in the bag, and try to guess what it was, and all the kids guessed what it was. It was just trying to get people to think a little differently than we standardly do about our senses, and how other students will perceive things differently. It was very nicely done. And then all of us, all six of us, had an opportunity to see the Rosevalley Area High School new science wing just before this meeting, but since nobody else has mentioned, I thought I'd mention it for the public, because it is amazing. It is an incredibly gorgeous facility with some wonderful resources for our students, and I just feel extremely fortunate that we're able to have that in our district.
There will be a commuter, an opportunity for the community to come in and say, were you about to say that? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Well, no, I can't remember what the date is, but.
It's sometime in March or April.
It'll be March. We're going to have a specific date. Yeah, okay, okay.
We're going to wait until the auto shop, is that correct? The auto shop will also be up and functional, and that's why we're waiting until that timeframe for the, for the tour. I'm assuming you have nothing to add?
Or, or you might, to share with us or with folks who might be watching us, or will look at the, at the tape of the meeting, so it's anything you feel worth sharing.
I really enjoyed the visit right before this. That was amazing. It was amazing to see kind of the progress, because when I drive on 36 every day, right, and then you kind of see, finally you're inside, and just lovely, just really lovely, and I was just imagining all the students who have access to it, love to know that the teachers are loving this, and so it's a great thing. I almost thought about, oh, maybe I should go back to teaching. Just a momentary, I just thought maybe I should go back to teaching, because it's just lovely, lovely a facility, so I can't wait to go back and visit more. Yeah.
The only thing I have to share is a bit wonky, perhaps, the MSBA Minnesota School Boards Association has asked all of the school districts in Minnesota to consider to consider approving a resolution that we support local control. So in a way, it's kind of a resolution saying, you know, we love mom and apple pie, but I think they just want to have the numbers, so that when they do their legislative lobbying this year, they'll have the strength of being able to say a huge percentage of local districts still fiercely want local control. So I'll send a copy of their wording to Michelle to get on her agenda probably for the next meeting, so we can discuss it and bring it up as a formal item to pass as a resolution of the Board and report that to MSBA. They just asked that if we did that, that we do it by February at some point, so. Madam Goggins. Director Goggins. Madam, next Chair.
I'm sorry, forgot one thing to mention to Board members, that if you're going to MSBA this week, on Thursday at 3:45, the leaders in training the youth that are actually hosting those community conversations, et cetera, will be talking and sharing some elements of student voice. We'll talk a little bit more broadly how we're using student voice in the district. And then they will share some of their perspectives and their experience in education. And so I just got a chance to see their presentation when they did it with me at the FRET Conference in the fall. And that was a bit longer, but it was really excellent. And I'm sure you get a lot out of it. Some plug in for that.
And I think you yourself are one of the facilitators or co-presenters, I think.
I just kind of do the introduction, the stage setting about what we're doing as a district, and then they take the whole.
Thank you. And just for context, for those who don't know, every year, the Minnesota School Boards Association in January has a two-and-a-half-day leadership conference, where all the school board members across the state are invited to come and gather. And here, presentations, have workshops, talk about things that are important to the districts, et cetera. And, you know, I think most, if not all of us, have gone at some point over the years. And I know a number of us are attending this year also, and that's later this week, so. Thank you.
I guess, yeah. I guess I could mention that I will be trained tomorrow all day as the new Director on the finance, the financial matters of being a Board Member. So I'm actually excited about that. I'm very excited about that, so. It's tomorrow, yeah.
If there's nothing else, that concludes the regular Board Meeting portion this evening. So we'll adjourn for five or 10 minutes. I think we have a photo we need to take, and then we'll reconvene as our study session thereafter. Thank you.